Good evening. It's six o'clock and we will begin the July 2nd, 2024, meeting of the City Commission. Chelsea, can you please do the roll call?
Mayor Adamchak?
Here.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Minton?
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment on any items not on the agenda tonight? We do not have anybody sign up, but please come forward.
Very good. Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. Today, I'd like to consider the city's overall strategy as that compares to, you know, real life. I think that the Move MHK plan is an interesting microcosm. Let's recap. The commissioners decided to spend $200,000 on a master plan that they admitted to not even reading. We can ignore that for now because the results of that plan were remarkably clear when you do actually read it. First, citizens overwhelmingly prioritize nature and trails. Second, that our citizens already enjoy a well above average ratio of humans to park acreage, and that our current park system is more than sufficient for our entire community, plus another 9,000 citizens. That's a 16% bump in our city population. Our cumulative growth since 2010 still does not get us to 15%. And here we are, senselessly pursuing a growth strategy in a city that has barely grown in 15 years. Our commissioners are so entitled and out of touch that they're treating the city like an infinitely remodeled mansion in Grand Mirror Sheringbrook. But we are not a homeowner looking to increase our property resale value. We are a city looking to improve the lives of its citizens. And residents, actual residents, not tourists, not absentee hotel owners, not general contractors, not real estate developers. Residents, your constituents, the people you're supposed to be championing. Move MHK's revenue numbers are built on growth that hasn't and won't happen. Those projections are not real. The revenue will never be achieved. While the commission is focused on imaginary future gain, real conditions around us continue to deteriorate. What are we doing to mitigate the loss of life in the brutal tornadoes to come? Commissioner Minton herself enthusiastically used her first day on the job to chastise our fire chief for the seemingly outrageous expense of replacing 20-year-old tornado sirens in high-density, low-income neighborhoods. To be in these chambers that night was nauseating because I know what the rest of us small folk know. That less than two months before that meeting, Anne Miller, a health department employee, died horrifically after sirens in Westmoreland failed to notify residents of an EF3 tornado. Three more residents were injured, 22 homes were destroyed, and another 13 homes were severely damaged. What are we doing to strengthen the capability and health of social services? At the last commission meeting, the commission struggled to allocate funds to six of the civic organizations from public transportation to the library, but had little to say in cross-examining the final two, even though Aggieville Business District required a 50% budget increase and downtown Manhattan's budget doubled in one year. What are we doing to support the working class? Raising the sales tax hurts regular folks more than anyone else at the gas station and at the grocery store. But our commissioners do not even know the difference between regressive, proportional, and progressive taxation. What are we doing to increase revenue by capturing taxes rightfully owed? Certainly not collecting guest tax from the over 400 Airbnbs in our city, which would generate over $1 million in transient guest tax funds for our city each year. What are we doing to address the looming housing crisis? Scheming to give property tax abatement to landlords and contractors to incentivize them to gentrify Aggieville with luxury housing. What are we doing to ensure that our citizens can eat? Over 10,000 citizens in our community right now do not know where their next meal is coming from, and sales tax increases again impact those already in need first. Furthermore, every Kansas farmer in the Flint Hills will tell you that we cannot continue to be the nation's breadbasket. Years straight of drought, vicious storms, late snowfall, and prairie fires have led to year after year of wheat and corn crop failures. Worsening financial conditions are causing many small farmers into foreclosure, and in western Kansas, conditions are so bad that many are experiencing dust bowl conditions. They've been shutting down the interstate over it. Wells are going dry, people are dying. But our commission is too busy pretending to be bipartisan to consider regional, state, and national threats to our lives. What are we doing to take care of what we already have? Would you like to stop me? Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
I appreciate that. What are we doing to take care of...
No, excuse me. My head shake was no... Cannot continue. It's... Your time is up.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? In that case, the general public comment is now closed. We will now have comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Minton?
Yeah, on Monday, Kansas Department of Commerce launched the Love Kansas Talent Recruitment Campaign, which targets... It's a grassroots effort mainly through letter writing, text, trying to recruit back individuals who have left Kansas to come back to our state and work. I think it's due to the efforts of Allison Muth at the Chamber. Manhattan's been selected as a pilot community and received a $5,000 grant that I believe the Chamber's handling. But that's something I encourage everyone to do, and that's to campaign, write letters, contact people who've moved out of state, and encourage them to come back because that's not just a Manhattan thing of needing employees. It's a state of Kansas effort.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I was glad Jamie could go to that. It was at the Discovery Center. I always like getting new people into the Discovery Center. Just one more reminder of the Sunflower Summer, which will get you 220 free admissions for kids. And locally, that's the Discovery Center, the zoo, the A&amp;H Farm. So just go online and type in Sunflower Summer and visit things.
And I would just like to provide an update on the search for the city manager. Commissioner Mata, myself, Katie Jackson, and De'Antide constitute the search committee. Between yesterday and today, we did Zoom interviews with nine candidates. We have narrowed the field to four, and they will be visiting July 22nd and 23rd. So there will be a public reception from 4:30 to 6:00, I believe, on Monday, the 22nd. So that'll be out here in the commission chamber, and it will be open to the public. Now, we will move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or items which have been previously reviewed by the City Commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda or at a different point on the agenda if desired by the commission. Does anyone on the commission have questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
I just had a question on E., and I put Lyndon on the spot. I meant to send an email earlier. The request dates about $473,000, but the ordinance has a total of $598,000 authorization. So I didn't know what the discrepancy was. Unless I'm reading it wrong, we're not going to rule that out.
I assume your ordinance is referenced to... Rena, did you do a bond resolution on this project?
Yeah, we would have done a project authorization, which is an ordinance for a stormwater project.
Okay.
Usually includes a 10% contingency plus the engineering as well.
Okay. So it includes more than just what was listed on the...
Construction amount. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are there any other...
I just wondered if we awarded a contract for refuse collection. To whom did we award that?
Waste management.
Waste management.
Waste management?
They were the only bid.
Okay. That's fine.
They were the only bid.
Just for the public. And the American Airlines contract, could you just kind of tell us what that involves?
Sure. Evening. Brent Keizer, Airport Director. Just basically what it involves is a five-year agreement with American Airlines to utilize the space that they operate in at the airport. You can see the breakdown in the cost. It does have an inflator every year. The cost will go up based on that rate that we negotiated through. And happy to answer any other questions.
Could you just speak to that rate?
What's that?
Could you just speak to that rate so the public knows what...
Sure. It's all broke down in the consent package. There's very many different rates that are tied into that, and that's basically how like American likes to see things in their lease agreements with different airports. And so there's different rates that are set for square footage usage, and it's just basically collecting that rate that they're utilizing that space for. And each rate has a different rate, so...
Okay. I didn't want to... I just want the public to know they can look it up if they wish.
Sure. Absolutely. Anything else?
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I would just like to note that included in tonight's consent agenda are several appointments to city boards and committees, including the Aggieville Business Improvement District, the Airport Advisory Board, Code Appeals Board, and Parks and Recreation. Is there a motion to accept... Oh, sorry. Is there any public comment on items on the consent agenda? Okay. Public comment period is now closed. Is there a motion from the commission?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner McCullough made the motion, and Commissioner Opelt has seconded. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We will move into the general agenda. And the first item is considering eliminating lots 1 through 10 and tracks A and B of Lee Mill Village Unit 4 from the Lee Mill Village Residential Plan Unit Development.
Good evening. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. The first item I have for you this evening, as the mayor just mentioned, is the Lee Mill Village PUD Amendment. Generally, this PUD is located north of Miller Parkway along Reith Avenue. As you can see here, outlined in green, this is the current boundaries of the PUD. And I realize that this is somewhat incorrect. So the amended PUD would also include this area up here. On... So what we're amending out is the city-owned lots that are vacant, as you can see here, and then as well as down in this area. Everything that is staying within that PUD has already been developed. So as we amend that PUD, the boundaries would be reflected to include what's here in red as well as what is up here. This did go to the planning board. There was one public comment. There was a homeowner that lived down in this area and was just concerned about the future development of really the area that was in here. And staff provided him response that this is a kind of a drainage area. There's a channel that goes in there. It'd be very difficult to develop. The planning board passed this six to zero. They didn't have many comments, and I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Is there anything about our PUDs that they have to be contiguous?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I was just curious if that was going to be...
It's definitely going to be different. Most of ours are contiguous, and it's kind of a block. This would be... We would have to have every single homeowner within this area to sign on to amending out of that PUD.
Okay, got it. All right. Thank you.
I had a question, Stephanie. Just what is... What's the advantage of taking those units out of the PUD?
Yeah, that's a great question. So PUDs are essentially their own zoning district. They have very specific requirements that are a lot of times in addition to what we already have in the MDC under a straight zoning district. So in this case, as we... Especially since the city owns these lots, as we begin to partner with a developer to develop these, there is an advantage of having them under a straight zoning district. The process is much more condensed, and we don't have to have any sort of building elevations from an architect if it's in a straight zoning district versus if it's in a PUD because of our process.
Thank you.
Stephanie, that won't have any impact on the Manhattan area housing partnership, housing that's there?
No, they're going to stay within the existing PUD, so all of their requirements and regulations would remain the same.
So do we have a copy of this ordinance? Do we need to read the whole thing? Can we approve the first reading of the ordinance amending Lee Mill Village Planned Unit Development? I'm sorry. Is there public comment on this? Seeing none, we will close public comment.
So we need a motion? Yeah. Motion to approve the first reading of the... Do I just read that? Sent to... Okay. First reading of an ordinance amending the Lee Mill Village Planned Unit Development.
Second. Clerk, will you please read the... Take the roll.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Now that we have removed those lots from the PUD, we will consider rezoning them. Rezoning lots 1 through 10, tracks A and B of Lee Mill Village Unit 4.
Yes. So we are all familiar now with the site. Let's just provide you a better overview, and this actually does reflect what the area that we will be rezoning that was just amended out of the PUD. A closer look here. You can see the lots and the tracks that the city owns. So the PUD zoning, that allows for a single-family residence up to a four-unit townhome. That's very consistent with what the RLA zoning district would allow for. That actually goes up to a five-unit townhome, but it would still allow everything down to a single-family detached residence. Immediately north of the site, it's zoned as RH, so that would allow more than 18 units in any building. You can see here that really this whole subdivision is mostly RL, which only allows single-family residents. But then these PUDs that you see here sprinkled within, they allow for a combination of single-family residences up to those duplex or townhome structures. So the zoning of the RLA is consistent with what you would already find in the neighborhood. When we look at our comprehensive plan and the future land use map, outlined here is the site or the lots that we're rezoning. It calls for single or low-to-medium-density residential. So RLA is consistent with that. You do see here that this is preserved open space. A significant portion of this would still remain as open space as a tract that would not be developed. There would just under... There would likely just be a few dwelling units that are right here along Reith. So that's still very consistent with what the comprehensive plan anticipates. One of the things that we like to present with our rezoning cases are all the permitted uses or a pretty comprehensive list of what the permitted uses would be. So in our RLA district, here's just some outright permitted uses. Someone could go to pull a building permit for any one of these. In this situation, it's somewhat unique because the city owns these lots. You do actually have a say in what could be developed there. If this was a private land, just because a developer comes in and says, "We're going to put four single-family homes here," the zoning district allows for more than that, and you can't restrict them to whatever specified use they come in with. So just kind of as a reminder there. This went to Planning Board as well, the same night as the PUD amendment. There were no public comments received, and the Planning Board motion to recommend approval, six to zero. I do have kind of an update of the larger Lee Mill Village process, but I wanted to first see if there's any questions regarding the rezoning. Okay. So on May 7th, I came before you and brought forth a proposed development with Frontier Development Group, and it was for six duplexes or twin homes. At that meeting, the commission gave us direction to go back and begin drafting a development agreement, which would include a kind of a series of different incentives that that developer was requesting in order to develop this very complex site. As we began working on that development agreement, there was an adjacent neighbor. Mr. Warren Morgan came forward, and he is interested in potentially purchasing two of the tracks from the city for a nominal price. This... What you see here is how the site is currently platted. We're actually working right now internally to replat these lots that would accommodate that future development of those six town, twin homes as well as to identify large tracks, kind of like what you see here. What Mr. Morgan would be interested in is there's going to be a tract. It's called Tract A. It's going to be somewhere in this area that would have a drainage easement over it. And then also interested in kind of this whole northern area. And then there's a drainage channel that goes back behind these future lots. That would be Tract C that he would be interested in. Additionally, as we began to kind of research the history of this, we found that there... In 2018, we had executed an agreement with the school district for an option on what is called Tract B. That's in this area right here. The school district owns this unannexed tract. And so that option or that agreement said that if the school district were to ever build an elementary school on this tract as part of their plan, then they would have the opportunity to purchase this tract from the city in order to have access to Reith. That agreement, as I mentioned, expired in... Maybe I didn't. But it expired in 2021. The school district is interested in keeping that option on the table. And so they would... In talking with USD Administration, they're going to go to their Board of Education, I believe, next week and talk about potentially making a request to the City Commission to purchase this Tract B. With the replat, that tract would actually come further up here. What we're looking for this evening, kind of separate from the rezoning action, is to get direction from you as the City Commission on if you would like for staff to draft a purchase agreement, both Mr. Morgan for the two tracks on the west side, and if we would like to pursue an option with the school district. I'll pause there. Jason, is there anything you wanted to add?
No. Just can I add clarification if there's questions?
I would like to know how this impacts Frontier's plans and also what are the implications for taking two of the tracks out of possibility of generating property tax?
Sure. So I...
Stephanie, you might also indicate that this upper-left quadrant is owned by the Morgans now?
Correct. Yes. This is owned by Mr. Morgan. Both Mr. Morgan and Tyler Holloman with Frontier Development Group, they've had some conversations back and forth. And what Mr. Morgan's prepared to purchase from the city does not impact Frontier's development at all. It actually takes the drainage easements that were already identified that would never be developed on. So the areas, both the tracks that the school district is interested in as well as Mr. Morgan, those don't have opportunities to be developed either due to topography or because of drainage channels.
So why does he want to buy them?
Good question from Mr. Morgan.
He owns this whole tract from here.
Yeah. So which one... He wants to buy the two that are...
So, yeah, this is all going to be replatted. So it kind of goes... So these two, for sure, are included in it. I believe a portion of this lot right here, and then kind of along where you see these trees, that's all of a steep slope and a drainage area.
Yeah.
And then that's connected down to kind of like this whole area right here.
Okay. So he's pretty much wanting to buy like the gully...
Yes.
Area.
Contiguous to his property.
Which isn't really... Yeah. Like, I've been down there. You can't build anything on it.
Does he want... There was... So there was a fire in this area about a month ago.
That was further north.
Right. But does he want... Is he intending to put a gravel road in or something in order to reach that side of the property?
So this... Because this is a drainage, it's going to be platted as a drainage easement. Actually, right now, I think it might be a preservation and drainage easement. There can't be... He would be severely limited on what is able to happen there. We're still working through what some of those drainage requirements would be. That's part of the plating process that we're undergoing right now. But that has to be maintained as vegetation to help with water quality and to slow that drainage down.
And the part that the school district wants to hold... So Tyler's developments are these two on the...
It's, yep, going to be kind of a box about right here. Yeah, go ahead.
So then the school district wants part of that area to the south of that?
It would be kind of everything that you see that's wooded here to the east, and then everything that's currently down here as a tract.
In 2018, they approached us with potential for secondary access. So being able to connect into Reith was important to them if they ever developed that grade school. And again, here we are, you know, six years later. They're still interested in the property, given the future potential for the site.
So Stephanie, sorry. Any other comments? Stephanie, what do you need from us?
First, it would be if you want to take action on the zoning matter that is before you. And then also after that, if the commission wants to give staff direction on if you want us to draft the purchase agreement with Mr. Morgan and with the school district in the instance that the Board of Education authorizes their staff to do so.
Is there any public comment on these two items? Okay. Do we have a motion to... Any further discussion, commissioners?
I'm fine with the purchases.
Yeah. I mean, I guess some income is better than zero. There's not really any opportunity there, so...
We didn't ask Stephanie what the nominal amount was.
Yeah.
I'll look to Jason.
He's offered us $1,000.
I thought usually they had to pay back taxes. No?
I mean, we own the properties, so the taxes are current.
Yeah.
So there aren't any back... Delinquent taxes. You want to negotiate some of the taxes you all have paid over the years.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning 10 lots and two tracks within Lee Mill Village Unit 4 from planned unit development to low-density residential attached?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. We have had a motion from Commissioner Opelt, seconded by Commissioner McCullough. City Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Holloway, please give me advance notice when construction begins. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And you did want to... Did we...
Oh. And sorry. Some discussion... Any discussion about having the community development office prepare those purchase agreements?
I think we're going to need to just engage with the owners a little bit. Anytime the city disposes of any property of any value, we need to make sure that's identified. So we need to go back to the plats. We need to go back to the current designations and make sure the offer can be processed.
Yeah, I'm okay looking into it.
Yeah.
So we don't need to move on that, I think? All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Next item on the agenda. Consider the guaranteed maximum price Phase 2 agreement for the final design and construction of Seco Park improvements.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Wyatt Thompson, Assistant City Manager. Been the project lead on this project for quite a few years. Aaron Stewart, Parks and Rec Director, and I will tag-team some of this presentation. I think we're at an exciting... Um, I think we're, we're at an exciting point in this, in this project and just to kind of set the stage for you, uh, the city constructed, uh, ballfields at Seco Park in 1965 and constructed the tennis courts in 1979. And so for almost sixty years, the community has had the opportunity to recreate and play and enjoy and, uh, win games and have fun with their friends at these facilities. And so tonight is an opportunity to make sure that future generations of Manhattan residents and youth, uh, can continue to participate in activities there at Seco Park. Uh, been involved in this process here for about eight years, uh, going back to 2015, uh, nine years almost, I guess. So we passed, the commission passed a strategic facility improvement plan for improvement athletic facilities at, at a number of park and rec facilities and that's really when we identified improvements for Seco Park were needed. Um, in 2017, we put together the concept plan and passed, uh, tax to support the improvements and in 2023 selected that design team, uh, to help us, uh, get to this point. So over the last ten months, uh, we've been engaging with the community, uh, working on updating that concept design and our consultants have developed thirty percent plans and, and the guaranteed maximum price that we'll talk about tonight. So tonight, we're looking for that approval of that GMP and that Phase Two contract, which includes both final design and construction of the improvements at Seco Park. Uh, just a quick word about public engagement, over those ten months, we, we had six meetings with our, uh, advisory committee that was appointed by, uh, the City Commission, uh, lots of great feedback from those community members. We had five focus groups, several meetings with intergovernmental partners, um, a public meeting, as well as updates to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, USD 383, Raleigh County, uh, Commission, as well as a couple of updates to you all at the commission retreat and a work session a couple of months ago. So all of that input and history has, has resulted in this updated, uh, concept plan for Seco Park. North is to the right, so just to orient everyone, Kimball Avenue is to the, is to the right of the page, Wreath Avenue at the bottom and Robinson Drive to the left. Uh, this is the pool and Bishop Stadium and obviously our main, main improvements for the ballfields are here, four new ballfields, a warm-up areas and a lot of support amenities and spaces. And then the eight new tennis courts, uh, roughly where the existing three tennis courts are, are located. Uh, this drawing shows you the base project. Uh, there are a lot of alternates and other amenities that we have worked with the, the consultants and the committee to prioritize and, and so we'll talk about both of those this evening. I want to do a quick fly-through video, I think this kind of gives you the, the feel for what the facility is. This video will show you the base project plus all of the alternates. So if we were able to accomplish all of them, um, this is what the result would be. So this is a, we're kind of walking into the facility from Kimball Avenue, the parking lots are on the right, the facility is on the left and this will be the main entrance into the complex. Where the main entrance is today, we've got a wide half-way, accommodate a lot of pedestrians as well as emergency vehicles and food trucks. Got a central building, uh, we'll pause it, right, oh, we'll pause it in a second. You see the, the fields with this, uh, seating, uh, netting, backstops and fences. There's a, a point on the building, you can see it's got an accessible rooftop as well as, uh, shade structure over the top. Some of those are alternate items. We plan for about five hundred seats at the competition fields. Now we're heading up stairs to the rooftop viewing deck, this is really a unique opportunity, we think. There are not a lot of complexes where you can view games from up above, it is part of our overall seating strategy. It's also a part of a revenue generation strategy for, uh, concessions and other activities, uh, that could occur there. Again, this is, this is one of those alternates that we would hope to be able to afford with the project. Coming down into this warm-up area, our base project has a, just an open grassy field. Uh, the enhanced alternate has, kind of subdivides that space into bullpens and pitching and hitting, uh, practice areas that really allow multiple teams to use this area between games, um, during MHS practices. In a big open space, you could pay, maybe get one or two teams could monopolize that zone by dividing it up. You can potentially get, you know, up to eight teams that are able to practice in those areas. It's kind of an overview, looking at the, the different ballfields, we've got two baseball and two softball. And then transitioning into the tennis, uh, kind of an overview of those eight tennis courts that would be constructed. That's enough for, um, MHS to have, uh, their practices and meets and, uh, CACIA regional tournaments as well as USDA tournaments, none of which we can host, uh, today because we don't have enough courts. See that central pedestrian spine in the center, so that's a good opportunity for viewing and for teams to, to hang out between games. There will be a, a central shade structure, uh, there as well for, uh, people to hang out in between matches.
Does the, uh, warm-up area, is that going to include softball pitching? I guess they don't pitch out of mounds, but pitching circles as well, or?
Sure. It wouldn't include circles, it would include the rubber for them to throw off of. And it would have multiple pitching distances to accommodate every level of both baseball and softball. Yeah, let's switch sides here. So this, this plan, uh, zooms in on the, on the baseball fields and this gives you, and the softball fields and kind of gives you a, a, a view of what that would look like. Again, Kimball to the right, so we've got, uh, uh, premier baseball field and secondary baseball field, uh, premier softball field and secondary softball, and then this is that warm-up area. Um, you see this is just the, the grass field, uh, without all the cages and additional partitions and designated pitching and hitting areas. Uh, we've got parking here on the, on the west side at the intersection of Kimball and Candlewood where it is today. Um, some of it's paved, some of it then bleeds into the county's property, which would remain gravel. There'd be additional sidewalks added to, to help people into the complex here at the main entrance. There's a secondary entrance at the south side and sidewalks, of course, that connect all of those amenities together, leading into the central building, the seating, um, the bullpens and other, other amenities around the, the fields. Um, also of note, there's a large drainage way that's planned and, and expanded detention areas on the east side as well to contain that stormwater that comes through this area.
Wyatt, I don't want to get into the weeds, but can you just remind us what's the difference between the premier, uh, field and the not premier field?
Uh, there is, uh, the premier fields are, are a little bit longer, they'll, it'll be where the varsity plays, when, when Manhattan High plays. Um, from a rec perspective, I think they're very similar in terms of how Park and Rec would utilize those fields. There is more seating at the, at the premier fields versus the secondary. And again, that gets back to hosting, uh, tournaments and events, those type of activities.
Thank you.
Uh, there, there will be synthetic turf on the infield of all four fields, so the brown areas that you see would be synthetic turf, very similar to what we have at Annaberg in the Twin Oaks complex. Um, and then the outfield would be irrigated natural grass, also like what we have at Twin Oaks.
Can you remind me, um, how much of this area is going to be, um, restricted? Like during non-usage hours and how much will be accessible all the time?
So the intent, uh, of the warm-up area, or one of the intents of that is to have that accessible and the fields would be secured. And the idea is to protect the investment in the fields, but that warm-up area would still offer that public access and most of the work that you do in baseball and softball can be done in a tunnel or on a mound.
Sure.
Or a pitching area.
And then, um, I didn't see it on one of the alternates, but do we, I thought I saw that we were going to have a play structure somewhere in there? Was that not in the cards?
A, a play structure is the next alternate in the list that we discussed with the steering committee. Um, if we could afford it, it would land right here. So we are in the base plan reserving the space and then running, there are some drainage utilities that are needed, we're going to run those to that area. So that we're set up for the future. Um, we actually just met on, uh, Monday with park staff out to look at the existing play structure and we have intent to salvage that structure and, and it's still in good shape, so we're going to save it to reuse at another park or potentially reuse it here, um, if the funds come available for the base construction and the safety surfacing and everything.
So the, the space will be there, um, it's just a matter of us finding the resources to be able to put it in.
Correct. So again, that view from the, from the entrance there, from the parking lot, uh, some sort of, uh, welcome signage, um, acknowledging the, the name of the complex, the, on the right there is that, uh, primary softball field and the left is the warm-up area. Again, showing the, the enhanced area, um, but could be, could be open grass fields as well. All the fields will be lighted as well, so we'll be able to have evening, evening games. And just to flip through a couple of views from, from various perspectives, as a spectator looking out onto the fields, um, all four fields will have scoreboards as you see in, in the outfield there. View from the pitcher's mound, this is on the baseball fields, we will have, uh, large movable mounds, um, that, that we're working with VHS to develop that, that scenario where we can have the mounds there for MHS and baseball activities and then remove the mounds and have a flat playing surface for recreation and other types of, of activities.
What would be under the mounds? I mean, if you, if you're putting synthetic something there, um, presumably there'd be no grass growing underneath it, so-
Yeah, so that image a- actually would be depleting an infield artificial turf, uh, on that field and that would continue under the mound and part of what we've challenged them to do is actually create a recess to where that mound, that full-size mound could set in. When we pull that out, we would put back a, um, basically a disc-
A fill-
That would fill that space and then we could use the other smaller mounds that we use for baseball or if we're playing softball, we need it to be flat, so, uh, the idea is to make it as multi-use as possible.
Cricket?
Potentially. It's a little short for cricket. Uh, you do see in, in the background here, um, some overhead netting, this kind of cloudy gray, this is overhead netting. This is one of the alternates as well that we've prioritized, um, in the, in the funding scheme. And that's for, that's for spectator safety and is just really a standard in any type of complex that's being developed, um, in recent years. Um, here's, here's a, a view kind of from the field back in, back towards the dugouts. Um, kind of a basic, uh, chain-linked dugout with a, a roof on top and access to the, to the bullpens from each field, uh, which are, which are in this area here. View from inside the, the dugout, lots of details to work out there with, uh, making sure we've got the right storage and equipment space and, and views for the players onto the field as well as player safety, uh, when they're, when they're waiting. Uh, this is a view from the south entry of the existing Bolton Memorial. So this, this feature would remain in the, in the plans and, and we would work around it really, and I think really kind of set it off in a more positive way, um, in the, with the, with the redesign. And then here's that view of that alternate to the, to the warm-up area. Uh, switching gears a little bit to the central concessions building, uh, this shows you the floor plan of what that building would look like. It includes restrooms, concessions, uh, meeting space for coaches, as well as changing areas for umpires, uh, mechanical space for, and some storage area for the parks division, as well as a large flex space in the center of the building that would become open to the public during events. Uh, we would envision that's an indoor area that's, uh, cooled and, uh, accessible to concessions for indoor, uh, dining. Uh, we also have, uh, hopes to have, uh, televisions in here that would be live streaming the games. There's opportunities for, um, other types of activities, kind of tournaments within tournaments that it could, that could occur um, inside of this space as well for other revenue generating opportunities as well as just, uh, kind of a unique aspect, uh, to the facility.
Wyatt, um, to Ms. Starling's comment earlier during the open mic session, what would be, what would, would it be possible to make that flex space a tornado shelter?
It would s- it would certainly be a spot where we, we could go in inclement weather. Uh, whether it's a rated s- storm shelter or not would require additional design and reinforcement. The base bid, I mean, the bid for the building is, is cinder block, um, but I don't know that it is currently set up to meet storm shelter requirements.
Is that, is that something that could be investigated?
Aaron, can, we, we can. Aaron, can you elaborate a little bit on our warning process that we go through when storms are approaching?
Yeah, so we, we brought on periwether this year that anytime lightning approaches within ten minutes, we get notifications, so it's really taking it out of the judgment of the person on site and put it into a system that's highly reliable. So when that occurs, there's no decision except to evacuate the facility. I think what that space is intended for, when we talk about if we get into a true-to-form rain delay, that's not necessarily severe weather. And by the way, periwether does escalate, so tornado warnings, et cetera, et cetera, all that information comes through. But, uh, in particular in the spring where we get some of these rain showers and you've got potentially, uh, teams out there, but we're just doing a twenty-minute delay or thirty-minute delay, that's an opportunity to have a space for them to kind of be in, where they're not trying to huddle in a dugout and they're not trying to do something, you know, out in the rain or hide in their cars. So it would be a gathering space that people could go to. Uh, I don't think, I think we talked very briefly one time about a secure space for, for that, but the reality is if that kind of weather is coming in, we want people out of the facility as soon as possible. So anytime we get that notification, and, and those of us that are administrators on that site know thirty mi- uh, uh, the thirty-minute window. So, uh, anytime it's thirty miles and then twenty miles and then ten miles, we continue as administrators to get notifications. So we're really watching that progression, not just for this, but for staff, um, to get them out of there. So we don't want them out there when that weather's in.
I guess I would just reiterate, if it's possible to just investigate whether, without adding a substantial amount to the project, if some reinforcement could be made, just, you know, we know that sometimes those storms come up extremely quickly. Just a thought, thank you.
Those are things we-
I would echo Assistant's concern for a safe room. Um, is that enough restrooms? Are they going to have five hundred people?
I would defer to our, our architects who are in the room, but, um, they've, they've told us that, that men's and women's and, and family rooms meet code requirements.
Are there restrooms other places?
The, these are the restrooms for the baseball and softball diamonds, yes.
You, you said there might be five hundred people there.
So-
It doesn't seem-
Garrick, would you like to talk to us about building code?
I mean, I, I'm, building codes one thing, but I mean, let's just-
Yes, so, um, we would not be able to present this if it did not meet that code, we would have to go back and redesign that.
Yeah, but I mean, but McCain didn't use to, they were up to code, but people had to stand outside for-
Yes, so actually, per code, we could go with fewer, um, fixture counts in there. So we actually added more knowing that we did have that five hundred count in there. So we made sure to actually increase the plumbing count than what the code required.
Comparatively speaking, talk to Twin Oaks, Maine, one through four, I think we have two journals and two toilets per?
Well, and the other component to consider is unlike McCain, which I understand what you're saying, when you think of those numbers, it doesn't feel like a lot. Everyone goes to the bathroom at the same time versus-
Yeah, that's true.
There's-
Yeah.
People are going in between games or during, I mean, there's a lot of that.
We're hoping to have tournaments going with eight, ten teams and all this kind of thing and, okay.
Ju- just based on experience in our facilities in Manhattan for baseball, softball, um, even football at the Bishop, I know that there's rarely a line.
Okay.
Even at peak time when all four fields are playing out at Twin Oaks, one through four, both restrooms are open. Um, I, I personally have just never experienced a line at the restroom in those facilities.
So as I just finished baseball with my son, these are more restrooms than any complex I visited this year.
complex I visited this year.
And don't they have, it's just porta-johns out there now, right?
Yeah, currently the sewer system is inoperable.
Right, I'm assuming it's gonna have HVAC as well?
Yes.
Cool.
This is kind of a 3D view if you pulled the roof off just to see the volume of spaces that are there. It does have a, potentially a second story, this is that alternate four and six for that rooftop viewing, that does require both stairs and some sort of elevator or lift to get up to that level from an accessibility standpoint, those are, the question of elevator or lift is something that we're still working through with the code department to understand exactly what those requirements are, which is why it's split out into two separate alternates. But this kind of shows you what that viewing deck would look like again, and then this also, this image also incorporates that alternate five, which would be that rooftop shade canopy over the top of it.
I do think that rooftop shade of some, I mean, having netting or something at a ball field is such a priority just from safety of everyone, especially if you're looking in four different directions, that if we're going at the rooftop, which I'm a big fan, this is very reminiscent of Bettis in Topeka and I love that ballpark, so I think that we'd almost have to marry those two concepts to have the shade or something protective, it's.
So the netting is one of the alternates that is first up on the priority, which if this did not have a shade structure would cover this area. We could, rather than the shade canopy that would potentially, or the hard roof that goes up here, there are probably some things that we could do in the interim to create shades such as these kind of tables with umbrellas that would create that local shade over that table. It's not as ideal, but it could get us through to provide shade as long as we have that safety netting over the top.
Yeah, the safety, as a spectator, the shade is very helpful as well, but from a safety standpoint, if there's the netting, then, yeah.
Why aren't we thinking solar panels over it?
On the, on top of the shade structure itself?
Shade structure.
Yeah, I mean, that's certain.
You see that a lot of places, people are using the solar in addition, you know, to provide the shade in parking structures and things like that.
Certainly, an option, we can have our team price up and see what that ROI would be to have solar power for the building.
Probably have to have quite a bit of reinforcement, I don't know if those can take a beating from a baseball, but I think it's worth considering.
Yeah, something we can ask our team to explore, so, any other comments from you on the rooftop?
Well, I just think this is an opportunity, when we talk about making this kind of investment, going ahead and investing in something like this does help us get that return. This becomes a unique feature that is not in every location that we can sell, that people like, they can come enjoy, you know, dine up there, have their drinks, get an elevated view of the field, it really draws into that experience. It's both this and that warm-up area where we would have eight cages, so one for every team that's warming up, and the throwing areas really would kind of start to set us apart from a lot of other locations. Places that do have cages, you often find teams fighting for them. It also organizes teams, is why it was kind of alluding to, where we don't have a whole lot of space out there for warm-up, we have enough to throw, but if you can organize them and they're hitting, that condenses that space quite a bit and it would be something unique for us. That kind of warm-up area is modeled after how major league teams work their teams through, but it's a great asset to have and you see that sparsely throughout these other complexes where we would be that upgrade and it would be very customer-friendly to have that in a draw to tournaments.
Erin, I think you kind of addressed this with Peters, but was that gonna be reservable outside of game weekends, that space or part of cost recovery?
The cages or the?
The cages and the warm-up area as like a practice location, or was that planning to be open use?
We would plan it, we would treat it like any other open field, you could reserve a space in there, but the idea is it's gonna be open, because, again, I think one of the important things is we want to have some space for people to come to be able to work on something that they can access anytime, with the exception of probably tournament night, tournament days.
So switching gears a little bit to the tennis complex, the eight courts as we spoke of in the video, enough to host a variety of tournaments and programs and activities both from the park and recreation side as well as meet the needs of USD 383. Central pavilion in the center with this kind of pedestrian spine and opportunities for seating and viewing. We've worked with Riley County to plan for a new sidewalk along Robinson Drive, connecting into existing sidewalks that are feeding people into either the pool or the concessions and restrooms at Bishop Stadium, as well as a direct connection from the tennis complex across to those concessions and restrooms there. So during tennis meets and other programmed activities and tournaments, we would have access to those restroom facilities from USD. The view here from those tennis courts again, just a couple of opportunities to see what that could look like. We would stripe four of those courts for youth tennis, so they'd all have adult lines, but four of the courts would have USTA lines for junior tennis programs, which is kind of a new standard for that. They would not have pickleball lines, pickleball and tennis currently don't jive with the way the lines are spaced as well as the nets, and so this would be a dedicated tennis facility. But it would create opportunity to stripe pickleball at some other courts that we have in City Park, for example.
I'm assuming you're gonna have lighting?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
I think I saw him in the back.
Yeah, all eight courts would be lit, have an opportunity for a push-button timer similar to what we have at City Park where if you were playing, push the button, get an hour of light, and then it would turn off when, after that hour, or so it wasn't burning light when people weren't there.
Sure, cool.
So BHS has proposed a guaranteed maximum price of $15,788,147. It's comprised of several pieces and parts, the base project, which is the four baseball fields with lighting and synthetic turf and irrigation and some of those basic support amenities, plus the eight tennis courts, parking and sidewalks, utility infrastructure for $14,159,128. That's fully paid from the Recreation and Trails Fund, which was the tax that was dedicated towards this project. There is a water main that needs to be relocated with this project, it was installed back in the 60s and so it's an opportunity to upgrade that city infrastructure, that would be paid from the water fund. There's a $790,000 stormwater allowance paid from the stormwater fund, this is for enhancements to that detention and drainage area on the east side, kind of beyond what the base project would require. We've done some work on Kimball Avenue over the past couple of years to increase drainage capacity under that road, we have some major restrictions as it enters the park, so we, part of the project would be to remove those restrictions and then we have to deal with that, the volume of water as well as the speed of the water, so we have to find ways to slow it down before it enters that detention basin and flows downstream. So that stormwater money is in addition to, for those enhancements that Public Works has identified to manage that stormwater. And then we have an alternate allowance of $665,000 that would go towards that list of alternates that we've talked about, that would be paid from a combination of transient guest tax as well as Special Parks and Recreation Fund. The transient guest tax is currently paying debt service on turf and lights at the Annenberg-Twin Oaks complex, and so that has a couple more years left and the intent would be when that payment is done, a couple years of that payment would roll into CECO to cover these alternates. This slide kind of zooms in on the base project, that $14 million total, this kind of shows you how that's divvied up, so the majority of it is the construction cost itself and really what I want to highlight here is this construction contingency. BHS is holding a 10% contingency based on the level of detail that's in the plans currently. We asked them to develop a guaranteed price at 30% drawings, so there's still a lot of detail to come through in those drawings and specifications, so that 10% contingency is intended to cover that risk. Some of that money is gonna flow back into the construction cost of the project, we anticipate some of that money is also going to flow the other direction and be freed up, because as we get hard bids, as we find savings through the design process, some of that money will become available for the alternates to pad that alternate budget and allow us to get additional amenities in the facility. This is a detail of that alternate allowance, so as I said, we have $665,000 allocated within the GMP with the hopes that the contingency will free up and increase that amount. The six alternates are listed here with an estimated total of about $2 million, there's contingency in that as well, the same level that is in the entire project. We're recommending as an initial look, alternates two for that overhead netting for safety and four and six for that rooftop viewing experience. Alternate six might not be needed, we might be able to find a way to do that with a lift instead of an elevator, we might be able to find other savings to generate money for warm-up areas, bleacher shade and rooftop shade as well. We are pursuing other grants and sponsorships and other funding opportunities to make up that gap as well.
I'm sorry, the alternate allowance is $665,000, but it's really $2 million? Or even if we just do part of it, it's $700,000? What's the number at the top?
The 665 is what's in the GMP, it's what's in the contract as an allotment for this work. The total of all six of those alternates is $2 million, so obviously we're not gonna do all of them. The total of the three that are recommended is $735,000. We anticipate through the rest of the design process that we will find savings both in the alternates as well as savings in the base project to move money from the contingency into this alternate allowance to make up that gap.
From BHS's contingency?
From BHS's contingence, from BHS's contingency in the base project, that $1.1 million, some of that 1.1 is gonna go into the base project, some of that we expect will free up and can move into the alternates to make up that $70,000 gap to get alternates two, four and six, or potentially more.
So basically, we've got, our GMP includes some money for some of these extras.
Correct.
And if we have extra, extra money as we go along, we'll add them on as we have money, it's not going to go above the GMP that we're voting on tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
So if.
I would think that for the teams, the warm-up area and the bleachers would be more important than the rooftop, I mean, the rooftop deck is lovely, but it's kind of an extra thrill. I mean, the warm-up area is what we need for all those kids to do things while they're waiting for their game.
Well, having the open grass would satisfy as a warm-up area, obviously, it wouldn't be as organized as what we're talking about in the alternate one. I think the key here is, you get, if you're doing the construction on the building, you would build it to support that rooftop view deck. In the original construction, it would be a lot harder to come back and potentially add it later.
But if you're gonna do, you've gotta be ADA compliant and so you're gonna have to have an elevator, even a lift, I don't know if people are not.
The cost of alternate four includes the lift, the cost of alternate six removes the lift and replaces it with an elevator. Obviously, the elevator's a lot more expensive, that's part of the conversation we need to continue to have with code. The items or the priorities that were sent through the advisory committee had alternate four, the rooftop deck, as a part of the base project, and then alternates one, two, three and five were prioritized in that order by the committee. We found out late, just a couple of weeks ago, that the elevator might need to be inserted into the project, and so we asked BHS to split out the rooftop deck so we could have this conversation about what does that amenity really cost.
Is there not an opportunity to look at a ramp or something that's actually, you know, accessible?
It would go up a whole story and I think the grade would be too steep.
Yeah, I guess it would require a long distance.
A ramp is another way to gain accessibility, but not really feasible at this site.
So Wyatt, if I understand correctly, the alternate four includes a lift?
Yes.
Alternate six, is that additional over and above number four?
Yes, there's a deduct for the cost of the lift inside of alternate six, so we take away the lift and then add money for the elevator.
Okay, so, so, excuse me.
Sorry.
I mean you, but, sorry. I just didn't want to lose my train of thought, which I just lost. So the rooftop view deck includes the lift, alternate six includes the rooftop view deck and an elevator, or it just includes, somehow I think you're double counting the lift.
It would be the cost of installing the elevator instead of the lift over and above what the alternate four is.
Okay, so if, but you're proposing both alternate four, which has the lift in it at $184,000, and you're proposing number six, which has the elevator, so shouldn't 184 be reduced?
No, but the elevator includes the deduct for the lift, so they removed the lift out of the elevator price, so.
Just as an example, the cost of the elevator might have been 285, but they, I'm making that up, I don't know, but they reduced, they took, they already counted the deduct in the alternate six price, so that's the add to get to that higher level of accessibility.
And then in one of your renderings, you had a lift on the exterior of the building, would an elevator be able to be external as well, or would that have to be placed internally?
That's to be determined a little bit. The original intent was to have a lift on the exterior of the building, when the conversation with code occurred a couple of weeks ago and the notion of an elevator arose, we didn't have time to redesign the building for what that might or might not look like. So I think we have options that we'll need to explore if we finalize that the elevator is needed, we could look at options on the outside, or we could look at incorporating it into the flex space perhaps with accessibility just from the inside.
Are the code conversations, city code, are they IBC codes, where's the?
It's relative to primarily the ADA, which is a conversations that are occurring with City Risk Reduction Office.
Okay, are there other examples, I mean, I don't know what Bettis has for their rooftop, like what their access is.
Bettis has a lift.
So there's some case and representative examples out there of the lift?
Potentially, yes. I think every site and every case of fact is gonna be different, but it does come down to that, what is our specific instance and what is the code interpretation based on both the ADA and the other codes that we may have in place in Manhattan?
Assuming both options give the same level of accessibility, what is the maintenance difference between an elevator and a lift?
Both of them, we have both in the city and other facilities, both of them require annual inspections and maintenance, the lift is a simpler component mechanically, so theoretically it's less maintenance, from an inspection standpoint, they're equal costs.
All right.
So we will.
But I still don't understand how it's 665 and then it's 735. Alternate allowance, we have that much? Or we, I mean, what's, the top number and the bottom number aren't the same?
So the 665 can increase at your. can increase at your discretion. What, we wanted to do two things with, with this process. When we met previously, we talked about a $15 million GMP. If you take away the stormwater allowance component, which is solving a different problem, we've delivered a $15 million GMP. The 665 really comes from trying to meet that intent. It also does match up with projections for revenue. I think there's more revenue that could insert into the project in the future. We had the discussion about why is there a difference in the bond authority versus the actual contract we're awarding? We'll have that same conversation potentially next week, or in two weeks when we come back for the, the project authorization for the temporary financing for this project. We will have a 10% contingency in that bond authority. But we won't have those costs necessarily identified here. We do have a revenue stream to support it. So there's another million dollars in revenue that could go into the project at some point. We weren't, I don't think we would recommend you do that immediately. But maybe as we move through this process and we find those savings in the contingency, we could come back with an amendment to the GMP with a revenue stream that would support some of the other alternates. It's very difficult to come back later in the game and add an elevator and a rooftop deck. It's much easier to come back and say, we'd like to enhance the warm-up area and add the turf and the fencing on what is otherwise a flat piece of grass. So that's, that's really why the rooftop comes higher in our recommendation is because we can't add it later. We can always add bleacher shade later. We could, even in the project or in the future, we could always add the fencing and turf for the warm-up area in the project or a few years down the road if we needed to.
One thing I think we need in the base project cost is the $500,000 for removing the electrical lines. That is totally done for this project, and it ought to be paid for out of this project's budget.
It, it is paid for out of the rec and trails fund. It is not part of the GMP. It's a separate contract directly with Evergy.
Yeah.
But that is accounted in a, in a future slide.
I'm sorry, where is it then?
So then this next slide is showing you the estimated total cost of the project of just under 17 million all in. So that's our GMP. This would be the contract that we would be looking for authorization for tonight. This is the private-
The 500,000?
This is the 500,000 from the Evergy Utility Relocation Contract that the commission approved several weeks ago. We have professional service fees of 448,000. Part of this is 191,000 that we've, are already paying BHS for the Phase One services to get us to this point. There's other inspection fees and, and potential project management fees that are incorporated into that. And then our FFNE benches, bike racks, trash cans, tables, various things that would be needed to outfit the space, all the concessions, equipment, things like that. We have an allowance outside the GMP, but within the total project budget of 200,000 to purchase those things that we would need to outfit the facility.
So now we're at 17 million?
For total project cost, yes.
Wyatt, does the professional service of fees include consultant or city rep? Yes, city rep on the project. I mean, it's a large project, and I know you've been project managing it, but there's going to be a lot of details. Aaron, is that, I know we spoke about this a little bit, but does, is there any consideration for that?
So one, one strategy is for staff, either myself or someone in Parks and Rec to manage the day-to-day of the project. We did that on the rec centers, we've done that on a variety of other projects. So that, that, our cost is not in this number. What this number is holding in reserve is, is money to go hire someone like a project manager as on a consultant basis to assist us in that process.
Okay, so that's accounted in there?
That's accounted for in that 448. So that would be an agreement that we would need to bring back to you all for authorization. And we haven't procured that service yet. It's a budget item that, that we're trying, that we're holding in that overall cost.
I do like where you're going though, because we had talked about this last week in including some of those staff costs. And now, it is just kind of an accounting mechanism to take some of that staff cost out of the general fund or that, that relieve some of that burden out of the general fund and allow it to be kind of included in some of these projects. So I think, you know, if, if we don't do that here, I, I, I think that's kind of where you were going.
Yeah, but also a consideration for if we're needing to either hire somebody to manage this or, or allocate significant resources and backfill, hire a consultant, something. I mean, there's going to be a lot of questions and a lot of, I'm assuming, daily, weekly briefing. I mean, there's going to be a lot of time spent on this project managing it. So wanting to either know if we're allocating specific staff time and then either if we have to backfill them or not, or a consultant, or just capturing the actual cost within it. I think that's, Peter, a good idea.
Good discussion, everyone. Thank you.
I, I do want to say, when, when we go to the alternates, I, I definitely hear what you're saying about the deck and the elevator, that those are things, if we're going to do them, they need to be done and planned for ahead of time. And I really, I, I think when, when we consider the accessibility, an elevator is probably our best option.
Go ahead, I'm going to disagree with you as soon as you're done.
Okay, I just, I think that it's just a more, I don't know, dignified way to get people up to that deck and allow them to enjoy that extra amenity. And it seems like the, it, it is, it, it does have a more significant cost, but, you know, considering, yeah, considering the safety and the overall cost of the project, I think it's kind of, it'd be worth it.
I do, I mean, I do hear what you're saying. I also know costly to fix, time to fix, and I feel like we haven't always have the best luck with elevators and different things. So I mean, I also would really like to find a way to get the warm-up area in there. So I understand what you're saying, Peter, though.
Let us know if we can assist at all with grant proposals or identifying potential sponsors for some of that additional funding.
So how much money do we have in the tax? Have we accumulated, having, we've paid for the two gyms, is that correct? We're still bonding part of it, right?
Nearly, so this, I added this slide today. So we'll, we'll walk through this. I think this will, will get to your, your question. So the, this shows the actual expenditures as well as projected expenditures for both, for the rec centers, for Seco Park, and for trails. When we, when we forecasted the tax in 2017, we anticipated a total revenue collection of 27 and a half million dollars. That's the purple dashed line. Our, and you can see that year to, not year to date, through 2023, we collected 15 million. We anticipated to collect 15 million. We actually collected over 19 and a half in the, in that period of years. And then we're projecting, we were projected to collect 12 million. We're actually anticipating to collect 12 million. We're projecting to collect another nearly 18 million for a total of, of 37 or a net of $10 million more than we projected initially in 2017.
I thought the tax went off in 27, 27. The, the taxes coming in for the park and Seco and all those things. I thought it sun, sunsetted in 20, 27.
The question was asked in November of 27. So 2018 would have been our first year of revenue. And you'll get revenue in 18, and then obviously nine years after that. More than likely, that should say 24 to 28, because the revenue will stop coming in.
This is 29, I mean-
The, the revenue stops in 28. That is, that is true. So this-
But the expenses-
But the, but the expenses continue into 29.
Okay. I don't think we should, okay.
So from a revenue standpoint, yes, revenue stops in 28, partway through 28. But these, there are, there are another year of expenses projected.
So the rec complexes were about 17, 7, right?
17, 8, yes. We've got one more payment on a temp note to pay this year, 2.4, and then those will be completely paid for at a total of 17, 8.
And the actual revenue is 37 million?
That's the projection.
Projected, well then what's the anticipated revenue? That's what they thought they were going to get back in-
That's what we thought we would get in, in, in 2017. When we were projecting that tax forward, we anticipated two points, 27.5 million.
Projected, we should, it should basically be a wash. We're spending 37 million and we're, we're thinking we're going to get, yeah.
Yeah.
37 million in.
Yes.
Kind of interesting that matches that way.
The, yes, the, our-
But of course, if we had some kind of COVID issue, we would not have those dollars coming in. And anyway, yeah.
If we, correct, if we had another major pandemic or global disruption, obviously our, yes, our, this revenue might not end up up here. I mean, in, even in 20 and 2021, we were still outpacing projections. A lot of that was due to compensating use tax. And so that wasn't really factored into the 27 and a half million that was anticipated in 2017 when we were building the budgets. But it's, it's been a strong revenue stream and helps make up a lot of that $10 million difference that we're seeing from what we thought we would have to what we are realizing as well as what we anticipate realizing through the end of the tax.
It's wonderful that it's coming in. I don't know that we need to spend every penny of it, but it's, it's great that it's working out that way. I just, I, I, I have some issues taking a million dollars out of the water in the sewer thing. I, I kind of think parks should pay for parks. And the, part of the park problem, I mean, the park issue here is drainage and that kind of thing. We're really kind of stealing from Peter to pay Paul. You know, we're, we're taking from one fund to give to another. And it's, a million dollars is, is pretty significant out of the sewer and water.
So the, the project is paying for a lot of the stormwater infrastructure that's needed for the project. It's taking care of itself in that way. So the, the drainage inlets and the pipes and the under drainage in the fields and the grading is all paid for from the rec and trails project. The 790 that's proposed from the stormwater fund is for additional enhancements that truly are needed whether we do the, the baseball fields or not. It's to, it's to address current drainage issues that are, that are, and the, the volume and the flow coming through the park isn't sustainable with the current infrastructure. So now is an opportunity, while we're there doing other work, to incorporate some of those stormwater enhancements that Public Works has identified as being needed to handle that flow.
But then there's 174 from the water, too. So it's not just 790.
Correct, correct. There's, there's a 179 from the water fund. That, again, aging infrastructure that has to be moved for the project or replaced at some point, even if we weren't doing the project. So it is, it is a cost of the utility that we're proposing. And the other, any other questions on this slide? I know this is new information that you're seeing tonight. But we tried to, to show you what those expenses have been as well as what those future expenses would be. We, we made a commitment for the rec center, Seco, as well as $2 million for trail projects. We are showing, investing more in trails based on that anticipated future balance. The last 1.3 million of this trail project, which is this big spike here, is the Marlat Trail. It closes a gap in the linear trail, the city loop from Dennison to Browning. And so along Marlat Avenue, it's, it's long been envisioned. And so it's one of those signature projects that we can wrap, that we think we could wrap up this initiative with to, to make a big difference to the community. So, so that is in excess of the 2 million that we promised the community we would spend. But we think that's a significant enough project that it would be worthwhile. Timing wise, it does align with where the county is looking at up, up their own upgrades to Marlat. We're currently partnering on a, on a preliminary design study to look at what that corridor would look like with the trail and the roadway improvements. So from a sequencing and the timing perspective, it does seem to work out. And so that's why we've included it in the forecast as such. Just a quick timeline, pending agreement tonight with where we're headed. We would move into final design and permitting through the end of the year. We'd begin work in December of '24 with construction really kicking off in '25, midway through 2026, completion in Au, in August, with some key milestone dates earlier in the year, both for the open, the ball fields for spring ball in 2026 and summer tennis in 2026 as well. We did take the project to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board and the Seco Park Improvements Advisory Committee, and they both voted to recommend the project move forward. And so our request tonight would be for you to consider approving the Phase Two Design-Build Agreement for the Seco Park Improvements Project. Happy to answer other questions or entertain more discussion if there are other topics we haven't covered so far.
Commissioners, any additional queries or comments?
I, I just, I really have a problem with the price tag. We went from 7 million in 2017 and we're up about 150%. I know we've seen inflation for sure, but I don't think most people's houses have doubled in one and a half times. I mean, we're, we're in a serious budget issue problems. And I, I just don't know how we can ask the public to support us if we have to cut things or raise the mill levy or do any of those things if we're talking about a $17 million bunch of ball fields and tennis courts. I, I think we have to skin it back a bit. That's, that's just how I feel. It's too much money for this time.
Jamie?
I was trying to figure out how to frame my question. Because this is funding from a tax ballot measure, we do have restricted use of it per prod. I mean, can somebody, and Jason, maybe that's you of, I mean, in, in addressing Karen's concern, what, and I like what Peter was saying about trying to capture costs, kind of talking through some of that, if that could happen within it. But I, I don't know if there's another intended use. I know we've had a lot of conversations around this, but Jason, I mean, is it pretty clear in that tax language?
The tax is specific to improvements at the rec centers, Seco, trails. The taxes, the question was very specific in terms of what was going to happen at Seco. So you, you don't have a lot of flexibility to take this revenue and put it somewhere else in your budget. The question to the public was to build those improvements. And the voters said yes.
But they also thought it was going to be more tennis courts.
I mean- We, we talked about that earlier, Karen.
I know, I know, but we-
And budget constraints are leading us to eight courts versus 12.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I realize that.
We can't afford to build 12.
But if we're going to say we're doing exactly what we said we'd do in 2017, we're not doing exactly what we said we'd do. We're doing some other things and having rooftop dining and things like that that quite frankly, in this period of negative growth in Manhattan, I'm just concerned.
Yeah, if you don't want to max out the revenues being spent at Seco, you can take those same revenues and put them in trails or go back to the rec centers and put that money there.
And maintenance and, and-
Even when we were dealing with the pools and the Zoo Ed Center, and we paid those off, we had the option to put that money back into those facilities or rescind the tax. It's not like you could just take revenue and start spending it wherever you'd like.
No.
These questions are specific to the improvements. And that's why we projected out the amount we have to try to maximize what we're spending in all three categories of rec centers, trails, and Seco.
Right.
You don't want to spend the money at Seco, that's fine. You're just going to push off a decision later, 2027, 2028, as to what to do with the balance of the money.
But I think we're also hoping to, to go for a tax for indoor water. We desperately need indoor water in this town. And I think the public will be concerned that we have spent so much money on ball fields and tennis courts that they will not be responsive to- that they will not be responsive to the need. And we could spend some of the money, if we had some savings, on maintenance and improvements of our gyms, which are already, you know, things get banged up. And, and we might even be able to put a weight room in one of them or something like that. I'm just saying, I think this is too much money. That's, I'm sorry, but that's what I think.
What?
You don't have to be.
Well, no, I, I, I'm just curious what might make you feel more comfortable about this. Or what, what, aside from the, the price tag, what are you seeing as kind of superfluous?
Well, I'm, I'm concerned about tying up. You know, there's a lot of kind of fogginess to me in the, the numbers we've been talking about. We've been talking about things from the, the, um, special, the transient guest tax in there too. We've been talking about money from stormwater and that kind of thing. I mean, you know, you guys, you, you can vote me down. That's no problem.
No, but I, I do think it's a good conversation. Can you go back to the, one of the slides?
Yeah, no, no, I'm not angry or anything. I'm just saying this is kind of how I feel. I mean, we're, we've gone from seven million to seventeen million. I just think there, there must be some ways that we can maybe make this a little. We've, we've had projects before. We had to scale back slightly.
Just a point of clarification. In twenty seventeen, when the tax was educated upon twenty seven and a half million dollars, as was forecasted, was the total budget. Each rec center was budgeted at eight and a half million dollars apiece. CECO was budgeted at eight and a half million dollars, and we had roughly three million dollars for trails. That was the budget we laid out for the community. We've obviously generated more revenue than that. The rec centers came in really close to the eight and a half million dollars apiece, a little bit more after all the costs were added in at the end of the day. But you're at a situation where, again, we're trying to maximize the revenues to the projects that the public voted on. If you want to scale those back, you can scale them back. There, there's no issue with that. But trying to maximize it into this facility to represent the revenue over a ten year stream to the things described in the question.
So I think, um, when you, you go back to the GMP, the other GMP and funding slide, the alternates allowance is coming from the transient guest tax and special parks and rec fund. And I think, Erin, you said something important about that is those alternates are what's kind of making this facility more attractive to those traveling teams that then would come into town, buy rooms at a hotel, buy food. And that's really kind of what that transient guest tax is supposed to be used for.
And the special parks and rec fund.
Right. And so I, you know, those are the kinds of things, I'm assuming those are the kinds of things that are making you a little leery about it. Cause other than that, I mean, thinking about the design and things like that, just looking at like ways we could change that to make it less expensive, I, I don't know. I mean, it's a pretty, it's a ba- it's a baseball field. And there, yeah, we could choose maybe, I mean, turf would be even more expensive upfront, right? I'm assuming.
To fully turf?
Yeah. Just thinking of out loud of things that we could do to, to actually make a big, a, a, a larger dent in the cost of the project. But I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what that would look like. Uh, and then if we're going to do this, is it going to be worth it if we cut back all that much? Is it even going to be the type of, of facility that we want to have?
When we went to, so Jason said the original twenty seventeen budget was eight and a half million dollars. When we issued the RFP for our design build services, we solicited for a ten million dollar project. And when we started working with BHS, they, they showed us what costs we're really doing from their perspective. We knew there was some inflation, which is why we proposed a ten million dollar budget to you all initially. They, they showed us that inflation over time and the, and it's, it's partially, it's, I mean, COVID had a spike, but really things haven't come back down. And certainly there, you know, BHS is here tonight and they could, they could speak to, to you in more detail if you would like. But when we approached the commission at the retreat in January or February and had a conversation about a ten million dollar budget to a fifteen million dollar budget for, again, GMP, there was, there was consensus to move forward with a, with planning for that GMP and of fifteen million. And so we, we tasked BHS to proceed with, with plans and, and budgets that would reach that, that goal. I think to, to go back to a ten or an eight and a half is certainly, we could do it, but I, we can't do it tonight. And I don't know what it would, I don't know what it would take. It would take significant reductions to the scope of the project and even doing less of what we told people in seventeen we would do.
I don't, I'm not suggesting we go back to ten or anything, but as you pointed out, in, in January, we talked about ten to fourteen million. Now we're talking seventeen million. That's all I'm saying. This is as many projects, there's a lot of wonderful things you can do with them. There are also sometimes ways that you can save money on them. And in the present financial situation of the city and the taxpayers, I don't think this is going to be a positive for us to do the things we need to do in other departments and to have the support of the public the way we need it.
So, I mean, I think, Karen, though, I, I don't know if, I don't believe this fund can help out other departments because it's so specific to theirs. For me, the question is though, in, in being smart with our financials, uh, like Erin, if you can predict the future on, uh, if you could do that, uh, like when we're, I mean, when we're forecasting what our, our upcoming expenses are going to be with, if we're looking at rec centers, trails, are we already projecting, I'm certain this is in Move MHK, I'm trying to quickly load a, uh, five hundred page document. I, I mean, are, are there opportunities that we're potentially missing out on that are already in the pipeline that you're going to come back in five years and, and ask us for? I mean.
As far as it relates to CECO or anything?
CECO, parks and rec or trails. I, I mean, I think where it comes down to, it's not about, if, for me, it's not about not spending the money, but it's about, is there a another use of, of, within that, that we are later going to be paying for, that's within reason at this time? Is there a current, I guess, urgent need or is there a need that, that we're saying, hey, in five years, we really are going to need another million dollars to do X, Y, and Z? So please look into your crystal ball.
Off the top of my head, I, I don't know what that would be at this point. I mean, we're going to continue to have maintenance, but that comes out of our operating fund for things like trails. I will say that this fund helped develop trails at Stonehaven, which is the park we opened last fall. And that Marlat is a big piece. And as prices have escalated, part of what was important to me and our staff, given what we know from the public about the importance of trail development in that Marlat corridor, again, we committed two million. I think you can see that we, we upped that as well, rather than just this project. So it was important to us that we still maintain that commitment. I wasn't here when this passed. My understanding is that there was a strong desire for improved playability in hosting tournaments, both on the tennis side and the baseball side. This honestly is a really scaled back facility. I know it doesn't sound that way. But we were very strategic about the amenities that we did want to upgrade for that ability to peel off and draw tournaments here. And that will help us long term to pay for the maintenance on the facility, because the more we can draw in, the more, uh, guests that we get into town, uh, the better off we are. Not only do we make money if we're doing tournaments directly, uh, but there's an economic impact number to that as well. And so these types of amenities like that, that could be done right now, that would be very difficult to come back later and do or, or to me, more important to get out front right now, because we can hopefully capture that additional revenue to go build those other facilities. So, I mean, there could be a donor that could put that in. There could be sponsorships that derive from that rooftop that help pay for the other amenities. And so I think there's these opportunities out there. I get we're here tonight asking for some faith in this, but, uh, really, we looked at this from an operator standpoint on how that building would function in order for us to be able to go and sell it.
I, I mean, I guess if we're going to max out that tax amount, or that amount that's been collected, those revenues, my assumption would be then in twenty twenty nine, when that fund's no longer generating revenue, there's not request for, there's not significant requests in for trails, CECO, or rec centers that we potentially could have done out of this.
Yeah, that would, it would do that, but of course, it's not just from that fund. It's six hundred and sixty five from the transient guest tax, which we will probably tap for many things that are coming up in the budget.
Yeah.
And the other thing is there's no maintenance in there. We're putting this pretty darn fancy thing in there. How are we going to keep it up? And that, make it look as nice as, it's going to be beautiful. But we built those two gyms with no maintenance. Now, we, we have no staffing for them, that kind of thing. I just don't want us to, well.
I mean, we currently have a maintenance budget for this facility. Uh, part of what we're, um, putting in there is, uh, the ability to be low maintenance, both through the turf and using, uh, auto mowers in the outfield. So we would reduce staff time there. Currently, we've been, especially this year, spending a lot of time trying to get them up as much as possible with the amount of rain we've had, which was been a pretty unsuccessful venture. So, um, we're losing game time, which means we have to reschedule games, which takes staff time. So there, there's a domino effect here that from an operational standpoint, the upgrades actually reduce the maintenance in the interim. Now, long term, we'll have to replace turf, which will be a significant expense. But again, I think we have an annual operating budget that we would manage, uh, to make sure that we're taking care of a facility.
I mean, I'm very sympathetic to what Karen's bringing up, and I think we're going to have to take some hard looks at some things as we move forward with a lot of projects coming in. On the other hand, this is what, not exactly, but fits what we said we were going to do with the tax in this question. And I don't like the transient guest act or the stormwater fund. But I think we need to go through with this plan. We've got a plan. We've, we've got something we can execute. If we change it around now, we're going to be, you know, reanalyzing everything and trying to come up with, um, what to do. I'd feel much better, let's go through, let's do this, let's upgrade the facilities here. And then I think we need to look at other things like rationalizing our parks. I can't remember that huge number of parks that we said we'd have. Maybe we need to cut back on those and have ones that we can take care of and that are nice versus this, you know, big gambit of everything else.
So shall we call the question? Shall we call the question?
Yes, let's call it.
Two, we should probably have public comment first.
Oh, we can do that.
Is there anyone who would like to make public comment, please? Come forward. Please sign in.
Hello, my name is Christine Waxelman. I live at, uh, three nine six seven Eagle Talent Circle. I do not live in the city limits, but I am a school board member here at three eighty three. I have also been on the steering committee for CECO. I greatly appreciate your concern, Commissioner McCullough, for the, um, cost of the project. But I also want to assure you that there were many baseball guys on this committee who know a heck of a lot more about it than I do. And, um, we did scale this project down to bare bones and prioritized things such as safety and shade. I'm a nurse by trade. Those were my top priorities. So I was, um, pretty, those were, like I said, pretty high on my priority list. As part of that project, it's on district property. And so with regard to the number of the tennis courts, as, as the district, we did, we did concede that eight are very doable for what is needed. You would mention, the, the discussion had come up about tournaments. State tournaments do need twelve, but state tournaments also prefer college type facilities. That's not something CECO is going to be able to host. So eight, to answer your particular point with regards to that, eight is very doable and much more manageable for the, for the area of CECO. I just wanted to also say that, um, the city and the school district have had just a long time good history of cooperation. And I know that right now there's a lot of the, the use agreements that are being done. And I have no qualms or, or concerns that that's not going to continue to take place. But I do just want to assure you that there was a lot of discussion in time spent on this project. And, um, I, I mean, it was, you know, it was kind of, it was created when I was born. And so it's pretty cool to be able to, to sort of see this project, um, from beginning, not necessarily beginning. I remember voting and, on all of that things. But, but I'm just pretty excited to see how it's come to conclusion. And so I would just encourage you that, you know, it's, it's time for CECO to get a little facelift and, and I'm really excited about the project. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christine. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Uh, do we have a motion to?
Hey, Susan, I had a question real quick.
Sure.
That's, on the, I was thinking about the TGT and the special parks and rec, that, would that be temp noted and paid out? Why, is that, is that correct? That six hundred and sixty five thousand?
That's correct. Yeah, the, those two funding sources would be part of the temp note process. So it wouldn't be six hundred and sixty five all at once. It would come over, over the life of those temp notes.
Okay.
All right. So do we have a motion to consider the guaranteed maximum price in phase two agreement for the final design and construction of CECO Park Improvements?
I move we approve phase two design build agreement for CECO Park Improvements Project PR twenty three twenty, WA twenty four oh six, and SW twenty four eleven.
Second.
Commissioner Mata has made the motion to approve the phase two design build agreement for CECO Park Improvements. And Commissioner Minton has seconded. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adam Track?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
No.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. And the last item on our agenda for tonight is to consider additional improvements for safety and efficiencies at the OTT Maintenance Facility.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Jared Wassinger, Assistant City Manager. This is the discussion item tonight. We have, um, been in our joint maintenance facility, the OTT Maintenance Facility, uh, since it opened in March of twenty twenty three. Uh, this was a project that was a long time coming. Uh, various operational staff had been working out of pretty aging facilities across the community. Uh, we had shops off of Four Alley Boulevard and Juliet for our street and fleet crews, Parks and Forestry and Horticulture. We're working out of a, a pretty dated facility off of El Paso, also off of Four Alley Boulevard. And our utility distribution staff were located in a smaller facility off of Anderson Avenue, kind of near Plaza West. We began studying sites for a consolidated, uh, maintenance facility in twenty sixteen and ended up getting to the point where we selected a site near the wastewater treatment plant and purchased land in twenty nineteen. We did an RFP and a selection process to, uh, bring on a construction manager at RIS team, selecting a Cowan Gordon and BBN Architects. Uh, and then went through a pretty long process to design and construct that facility. This is just an exterior shot that you can all see here. This is the, uh, the main entrance into the building. This is, uh, just been a really, uh, great facility for our staff. Has helped tremendously with operations, recruitment and retention for staff. And we're, you know, we've only been in the facility for fifteen months, but we're already trying to identify and have seen efficiencies with all of our operational crews working together. Uh, this aerial shot, uh, the bottom of the image is, uh, the north here, wastewater treatment plants over here to the east. This is our, our levee right here and linear trail. To the east of the facilities, the, the main parking lot entrance, uh, in this lower northeast corner. This is the, uh, job site trailers that were donated, donated to us for free from the Department of Homeland Security. These were used for about four or five years when MBAF was being constructed, and they provided these to us when they were done with them for free. Uh, the only cost associated to us was moving them and outfitting them. So that was a, a nice addition that we had. This actually was used as one of the main areas when this site was being constructed. Right now, we're using it for a lot of impromptu gatherings of operational staffs. In particular, our snow crews are going to gather here before a snow event, before they disperse. Really not any electrical, other than lights in there. So no data, no Wi-Fi, internet, or Wi-Fi or anything like that now that we could utilize the facility for. This main entrance here is for staff. You have your fuel bays right here. I'm going to start in this corner of the building. This north bay right here is our fleet bay, where our fleet crews are working on all of our vehicles and equipment. Near the center portion is, is a big area with, for staffing, cubicles, offices, training rooms for our employees. This has just been a big benefit, too. We had so many superintendents and crew leaders who were never able to interact and talk with each other. And now they have that ability to coordinate on projects, ask each other questions face-to-face, and, and talk to each other. This portion right here on the, the south portion is where a lot of our different divisions have their own individual shops. So our Horticulture and Forestry crews, Utility crews, Fleet crews, all of them have their own different shops that I'm going to talk about later. And then this is, the south bay right here is larger vehicle storage, as well as, on this portion right here, you have the wash bay. We have some covered storage here for a lot of our equipment. This right here is the spreader racks I'm going to talk about later. We have our salt dome over here, some greenhouses over here. And you can't see it in this picture, but this is on the outskirts here, where we have a lot of storage of a lot of our commodities that we use on a day-to-day basis. The project was originally authorized by you all at twenty-five million dollars. This gets back to, we have a GMP, but we also authorize the project through a resolution or ordinance, depending on the project, with a maximum amount of authority. Total cost expended to date, twenty-two million, just almost twenty-three million. That actually came in about sixty thousand dollars below the GMP that we agreed upon. So we did come in under budget when we completed the project. We've been in the facility now, like I said, for about fifteen months. And we've just identified some areas of improvement that we'd like to see from a safety and efficiency standpoint. Some things, too, that, you know, we'll talk about as we go through that we didn't necessarily catch during the initial construction and design. But we want to, we're going to be in this facility for hopefully a long time, and we want to, we want to correct them. So that one point two million in additional improvements includes design and construction, construction administration and contingency with McCown Gordon and BBN. Of that one point two million, I'll highlight it here in the next slide, about a hundred and fifty thousand of that is going to be separate outside of that contract, potentially with McCown and BBN for the purchase of some equipment for our fleet crews. At the time that we approved the project, the idea was a twenty-year bond. We've been temp noting this for almost four years now. So we're going to be bonding this project here in May of twenty twenty-five. We're going to use some proceeds from the sale of our shops along Juliet. And then we have a breakdown of various funds that we're going to do the annual payments for the twenty-year bond that were identified a few years ago. I do, before I jump into these, just kind of list of improvements, we have a handful of folks here. Patrick with BBN and Kyle with McCown Gordon are here to assist with any questions you have related to some of these specific tasks, as well as we have Dan from Fleet and Casey from Parks, who are here and in these facilities and can kind of speak to some of the specific needs that we're hoping to address here. Here in this back area, we have some open space, so we'd like to start doing our own tire and alignment work. We outsource that here at a cost when we need to do that work. And our crews are able and willing to do that, we just don't have the equipment to do it. So we're trying to purchase some equipment for that alignment. We're also, we don't have a lift within the facility that can lift and work on vehicles over one ton. So those are our dump trucks, our fire trucks, our street sweepers, trying to acquire that.
Question for you, on the tire and alignment that you go out of house for now, what's the savings going to be by not having to go out of house? What's our payback on the seventy-four thousand?
Dan can, can speak to that, but I know he, he's told me and commissioners when we provided tours that within two or three years, we'd be making back our money from the money that we're paying to get those vehicles fixed out of house.
Maybe we just get that when you get the numbers and, because those are the type of things that are nice to look at the budget and see where we really realize savings on something like that.
Yeah. Looking for some additional electrical outlets, that's a small cost here. These are all just all the cost estimates for the construction piece of the project. I mentioned those department shops, right now, all those are heated, but they do not have air conditioning. That was one of the things we reduced from the scope a few years ago to save costs. But it gets pretty hot in there when it's a hundred degrees, so we're trying to address that here. Within this area, actually where you're standing when you're taking this picture, above that is a, a bay for storage and above, like a mezzanine that opens up. And we'd like to attach a, do some, a safety gate structure where staff can attach themselves securely when they're, they have a forklift and they'll put storage of materials up there. So we want to add a safety gate to that feature. There is one that's similar on that south bay, but we want to replicate that here on this bay. Those covered canopies for vehicles, this was something that was really, you know, an oversight when we were reviewing plans during that three-year phase over construction. You know, originally, we wanted these, you can see these electrical outlets, we wanted them on the side of these bollards so that a vehicle could pull all the way through. You can see here, we, some of our larger vehicles are, they can't do that because of those electrical outlets. So we want to relocate those. That was just something that during the plan review, we didn't catch, so we want to correct that. The seventeen K expense is, is an additional one, but it also, we're trying to extend the life of our vehicles. So there, we're, these are bays that we created so that we could protect our vehicles from the elements, so we're trying to do that. That job trailer from DHS that I mentioned, really wanting to outfit that. So we have one, room for expansion for our staff, two, just additional space for our crews to eventually work out of and utilize as a full space with, like I said, Wi-Fi. It includes, you know, getting the fiber to there, creating the access points so that we can potentially put up workstations or, or large group training areas. We have already repurposed a couple of the map rooms, two additional workspaces. So looking for additional workstations and monitors in those areas. Also looking for some snow guards on some of our roofs to protect a lot of these areas here. We've noticed when it snows, you get a lot of drainage here that is going to be falling from these areas on those bays. The rack spreader is one of the bigger improvements from an expense standpoint. My understanding, we, we did have a rack spreader similar to this at our old fleet shops. This is, again, one of those, I, I'd say it was just a breakdown in communication, from my understanding, when this was designed. We, we were working with our designers on a spreader rack that could house these things and, and store these from a safe perspective for our employees to be putting these on and off and, you know, unattaching the chains. And what it looks like on paper didn't end up being what it looked like when it was built. That was just something that was a pretty big oversight.
Was it built to plan?
No, it was built as designed, but, so in the plans, th- this is what it showed. And there are some inconsistencies with what we were looking for. You have the, the catwalk on the top, which really doesn't help a, a staff member who's trying to detach the, the chains that are holding up the equipment on those racks.
I know we talked about this when I walked through. I mean, I found this one very disappointing.
Yeah.
My understanding is it just hasn't been, been functional. I mean, the, and I've kind of heard different stories that it was the people, the contractor building it had, had experience building it in, you know, and then I heard we did a bunch of the design for it. So I'm not really sure what happened. But, you know, this is, you know, a bunch of money just because it wasn't done right to begin with. I don't know if the contractor can speak to this, or, but this one's very frustrating.
We didn't necessarily design it, there were conversations at the beginning back in twenty twenty, when the schematic design was occurring, conversations with the designers and our staff. And my understanding is that that didn't translate of what our staff wanted versus what they were designing. And then that design that was originally designed back in twenty twenty carried through.
Again, I mean, we think.
It's not, it's not a great explanation.
No, we need accountability.
This is kind of where we're at.
I mean, we do, and not to relate this to the conversation we just had, but was there a project manager, a city PM on this that was overseeing all, a specific position?
Rob Ott, our Public Works Director.
Which is?
This, this gets back to how we manage projects moving forward.
That's what I mean.
How we manage projects in the past. There are things that have happened in a lot of our projects where after the fact, we're making a change. This is something where in the future, we could have specific individuals like Wyatt, who are overseeing projects, or we could hire someone who is a representative, city representative, to represent our interests and really review these, as opposed to what we've done in the past historically, which was person X.
Is just taking on a giant responsibility.
Do your job and all that you have to do and manage this other project and, and manage a twenty-two million dollar.
Yeah, I do think when we're.
Things are going to slip through the cracks.
Future large projects. I mean, this was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar mistake that I would say would have been prevented and, and easier to hold somebody accountable, too, when we have a specific designated project manager on these very large ones that's not handling all the other things that go along with it. So we can't go back in time on this one, that's not what I'm suggesting. It's encouragement of, we need to be truly allocating resources to somebody to be overseeing that on our behalf, whether that's a outside consultant in any of those experts in the, in the industries versus a, a city employee. I would be interested in that, but it's a costly mistake.
And this is, I don't mean to say it was a mistake from Rob or anything like that. This is, our office could have provided more oversight of this project.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to apply that.
And I, I know you didn't, but it's, it's, there's just so many things that go into it. And how could we get all of the right eyes on these? Even, even if I were managing this project, I have no clue how our staff is actually going to function with this piece of equipment. So it's getting the right people in the room, having multiple conversations about, about the equipment. And, and we're at a point here where we hadn't, something envisioned internally, it was different than what was designed, and we didn't catch it until it was there and it was too late.
Yeah.
So we're trying to correct it now.
Yeah.
And it has an expense to it.
To beat a dead horse, but I'll beat it a little bit. The, you know, we had the parking garage downtown, that wasn't supervised correctly on how it was done. So, I mean, you know, and, and at that time, it was said, well, that's, you know, water under the bridge, let's just go in forward. But we can't keep going forward with these, and we have to have some accountabilities.
These are the two bullets are just related to additional concrete in areas near our, our bays and our, our covered storage. We, we did decrease a lot of the concrete when we were doing the scope. This, this crushed asphalt is a lot cheaper, but there are some areas that we, we would see some benefit in adding some of that concrete as well. Looking to just replicate some covered storage for some of our dirt and soil to keep that away from the elements. Another thing that we reduced scope during the project. We are, that, the entry area just has some draining and grading issues that we're trying to address there, as well as additional security fencing along that area. The wash bay I mentioned, this is the drain right here, a trench drain that has a four-inch sewer line going to it. It clogs up a lot with all of the debris that's getting washed from our vehicles and into that. And our, our crews have to do a lot of work to either vacuum that out or use, you know, compressed air to push that out, to unclog that sewer line. We did talk a little bit about, you know, was the sewer line sized appropriately? From a design standpoint, yes, because, so you have this four-inch sewer line, and I'm, I'm regurgitating stuff from, from BBN. I have no clue actually what I'm talking about, but I'm just going to repeat myself, and then Patrick can come up and smack me in the head if I'm wrong. But if we did an eight-to-ten inch sewer line, you'd have to dig that deeper. It wouldn't align with the, from a gravity flow perspective to get to our sewer that we're connecting to. So we needed to use the, the four-inch there. What we're going to be doing is adding some interceptors to catch all that collection. So it's just a lot easier to maintain and clear out for our staff, as opposed to what we're doing now. And then looking to add some compressed air in this bay as well. So if the commission is willing to move forward with these additions, we'll try and target that first meeting in August to have that design build, we would do a design-build contract instead of a CMAR, given that these are all pretty straightforward changes. And we would do that with BBN and McCown, given their familiarity with the project. And we are trying to fast-track this based on the standpoint that we would need all of our expenditures committed in March of twenty twenty-five, when we bonded in May of twenty twenty-five. So we've got a lot of folks here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners?
Well, I know the, the spreader racks was, was my big question. And, you know, I, I know we can't go back. And now we kind of have a, a spreader rack that it does hold the spreaders. But I, I definitely see the, the safety issue, trying to get those on and off, especially if it's, if it's snowing, as it probably would be when we're trying to use those. You know, and I think all it would take is, is one accident for that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go away very quickly. And, you know, of course, the, you know, damage to, to that employee. So that's all kind of a sunk cost, and we've got to figure out how, how we're going to move forward. My, my other question, so, and it, it did kind of get cleared up, Jared, in your, in your presentation was, was with the bonding. So we still haven't bonded out the full cost of this, is that correct? Okay. So, I mean, it's not like this money is sitting in a, in a pot somewhere, like, that we can't put somewhere else. But this would be additional cost to what we've expended already, but still fit in under that original twenty-five million design that was approved, so. Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm definitely okay with talking about this. I think a lot of the things, yeah, they're, they're going to cost a little bit of money, but, shoot, I, our, our guys definitely deserve to have some air conditioning in their shops, that's for sure.
I, I think we all raised the issue when we were having our tours about the, the rack. Is there any, is there any way that thing can be repurposed at all? Is there any secondary use for it? I, I don't know myself.
I'm not sure. Kyle, is it, yeah?
Could it be reconfigured in any way to?
Yeah, so when the original concern came about, we actually had the installing contractor come out and take a peek. Our hopes are that a good majority of that can be salvaged for the modifications. But until we get this design completed with BBN, we didn't want to take that into consideration. So we're definitely hopeful that we can use some of that steel and some of the grading and railing to reconfigure. And that way, not all of the material is, is new, we're able to hopefully drive that cost down. But as far as being repurposed elsewhere, felt like that was probably the best bet.
Okay, thank you.
Not to be insulting on, on this, but KDOT or anyone have any recommendations for these spread? I mean, this isn't probably. I mean, this isn't probably a unique design that we have, correct?
I don't know about uniqueness. I do know Dan and his folks have some, have seen some spreader racks from KDOT and I think Douglas County that they had liked to mirror this, this new approach off of.
Okay, I mean, it's nice when we have a current example that we can say, build this, and we're going to put it in contract that it has to look like this and function like this, and, okay.
Yeah, I have no problem, because most of this is safety stuff, and I think that's very important. I hate to keep beating a dead horse, but the county has solar panels in their big shops, and they have floor heating, which saves them a lot of money. And I've spoken to Senator Moran, and there are dollars in the, in the Biden infrastructure bill for that kind of thing, and, you know, we're heating and cooling immense places, even if we could cut our costs by 20%.
There is in-floor heating.
There is in-floor heating, but there's no solar panels doing it, right? Yeah, well, that's what the county did. They, they, you know, they, because trying to heat and cool that kind of a space, but for heaven's sakes, yes, they need air conditioning. The other thing, and this is just a general statement, I think one of the problems when trying to do, figure out the budget from the commission's side, are the transfer payments from this fund to that fund. We've got 3% coming from special parks and rec funds, and that's, I guess, fine, but, you know, then we had, just had special parks and recs here, and we were transferring almost a million dollars from wastewater, from water funds and storm runner funds. And so I think sometimes it gets pretty hard to see what the bottom line is here with this kind of transfer from one department to another and really understanding what the true cost to each department is. That's just-
Is this proportional shares of space in the building? How was, how was this calculated?
A lot of it is related to the health and the balance of the fund as to this. I'd have to look back at how we came to some of this. Good example is, you know, our wastewater fund is much more healthy and brings in much more revenue than the special parks and rec fund. Commissioner McCullough, to your point, these, all of these funds have a forecast. Each time we're committing funds into the, committing payments into these funds, those are added to the forecast, so we know upfront as we, you know, four years ago, when we looked at this project and we committed estimated annual payments from these funds for this project, that gets added to that forecast. And then as future projects come up, that is, that is in play as we look at, can those funds allow for more projects and more capital improvements?
Yeah, I just, I'm just pointing out that there's transfers, particularly to IT, that go throughout the budget, and sometimes it almost seems like we have double accounting going on.
So I think to Commissioner McCullough's point, I think it's that sometimes we're not seeing those. We know that there's, what, $780,000 in special parks and rec fund, and this is going to be $50,000 a year for 20 years, I think, roughly. When we're looking at making future decisions, we're not necessarily seeing what's already allocated every time. I know in this, in the last item about CECO, we don't know that allocation amount yet. We know it's going to be temp noted, so I think it's just, makes it more difficult when we don't know how much of the funds are already allocated. And yes, I think understanding that we know you're not bringing us something that can't fit in that, but the question that usually goes through, at least my mind, is, what will we not be able to do in the future because we already allocated everything? Because then those funds are no longer available for use. But my understanding is like, that's already been decided on those. Right, I mean, the, the way it's been set up is already set for, for this. Jared doesn't want to answer that question?
No, I, I think we, we can provide that, too. When we put these types of payments into a forecast for a fund, we're letting you all know as a commission that that fund has the ability to, to make those payments. To your question, how much is left in the fund? What ability do you have in the future to pay for other things? Are all things to consider when you're picking a source of fund for a project to pay those payments.
Yeah, I, I thought we tried to allocate those funds based on the theory that they're doing so much work for that fund, like this is a joint maintenance facility, so you say, so much is getting on parks and rec, so much is going here, and it's more of an art than a science, but as opposed to, this is a stable fund. I'm going to use a lot of money.
Yeah, when Rob was putting together budget proposals and scenarios for the commission at the time, he and Brian and Randy were over the top of wastewater, water, storm, special street and highway. Special park and rec and bond and interest were the only two that they didn't control and have oversight of. Special park and rec is leveraged, and it's not a lot of money. So 3% is what we were able to come up with. The 32% in the bond and interest fund is substantial.
Yeah, well, that's, that was a little different.
That's three to 400K a year for the next 20, so that's a, that's a sizable investment that, you know, we're making out of that fund. But at the time, again, we looked at a lot of different options on this to try to land in an area that the commission was comfortable with financially. You all have discretion on this. Still, before we issue the permanent debt, you all can tell us one thing or another. This was obviously what the commission saw, witnessed, we temp noted, we constructed the facility. But every time we go to issue debt, we bring back these strategies. We issue debt twice a year. All those projects usually have a financial strategy associated with it that's been in place, but we've seen them altered. We've seen a different revenue stream get tweaked and moved here instead of there. Even after the debt's issued, we've seen revenue streams move around. So it's always at the discretion of where the commission would like us to go.
I mean, I, I believe we need to move forward with these, and again, hopefully get some good lessons learned for new projects going forward. Also, I'd just like to get in the exercise, as we do this and we say there's going to be efficiencies, we list what those are. I mean, the easiest one is that tire stuff. That's a pretty easy one to come up with, but there's a lot of others in there, too. Now, with a budget challenge, there's going to have to go out there, take a lot of stuff out, but I, I think it really makes you think when you have to go through and say, what is this really, is this really going to save me something? I think a lot of this will, but you just have to apply it to it and then, you know, make sure you recognize it.
I think with the efficiencies, it's, it's not all necessarily directly financial efficiencies. A lot of it's labor, too.
But, but it is labor. I mean, I, I think it's still a good exercise to calculate it versus talking the abstract.
Some of that is, is kind of hard to calculate, though, finance, like calculate the-
You, you can do it.
Jared, what do you need from us?
It seems like there's concurrence for a majority of the commission to come back with that design-build contract in August. So we'll work with BBN and McCown, Gordon to get that on in the future agenda. And then the two large purchased equipments from the lift and the alignment equipment would be also on a, a separate item on a future agenda, so we could acquire those.
Does anyone disagree that we have consensus on moving forward with this?
No, sounds good.
Yes, as Peter said, I think it's imperative that we do as much as we can to assure the safety of our staff, and they work hard for us. Let's, let's make sure that we try to keep them safe.
Difference in air conditioning.
Yeah, did you intentionally have us go out last week when it was 100 degrees?
We, that's, we did schedule yours at Friday at 2:00 PM, Mayor, just for that reason.
Thanks. Okay, it is 8:19. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting of July 2nd, 2024?
Yes, I move to adjourn the July 2nd, 2024 City Commission meeting.
Second. Commissioner Opelt has moved to adjourn the July 2nd, 2024 meeting. Commissioner Adamcheck has seconded. Chelsea, would you take the role, please?
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We do not have a meeting next Tuesday.
Yeah, I thought we might, might announce that.
So just wanted to let everybody know. The next meeting will be July 16th. It will be a legislative meeting. Thank you.